And I was told to file notice of intent to include it with my RV notice of intent. So I'm spending a lot of money here. I think that they are trying to just make me submit to them and, you know, maybe drop the hearing and, and just not be able to use my land or not be able to put my docs out. Very frustrating. I do have my close friend, Rob Baranowski, he's on the call also. He might want to speak on my behalf or about the property or about the way I've personally been treated by conservation members on the hearings. I believe they, they haven't treated me in a professional manner. There's been some outlandish statements and comments said. And I believe there's some conflicts of interest and there's some anger and hate towards me and I still can't figure out why that I'm going through the stuff that I've been going through. The Conservation Commission wants to come visit my property once again. This will be for the third time. They visited once with me on property and then they visited a second time without my, without my notice. They didn't go on the property. They looked over the fence, but we asked them two weeks in advance. Or we asked them two weeks ago that we would, we would be available for a walk through in the property again and it kind of fell on deaf ears. And they were actually out in my neighborhood in that area one day last week and didn't contact me or, or schedule anything. And they were out walking sites of other people that had applied for camper permits and dock permits way after the fact.
I just gotta have you wrap it up real quick though.
Could I, could I just ask, Mark, could I just ask you if you would please? Could you possibly put some of this in writing to us and submit it to the select board? We're trying to gather information for our future use. So if you could put that in writing, if you wouldn't mind, I would, I would really appreciate it.
Yes, and it should be in your inbox. I was just going out off of what I, what I actually wrote to select board. I sent it to the info address of select board. So you guys should be, should be getting that.
Okay, that's great.
Just, just very frustrating. My father, my, my father's retired. He had a stroke and he uses the property. I have friends and family that use it and it's, it's really stressful. You know, I'm being put through this.
Yeah. Conservation Commission, I'm just gonna make a blank statement here. They are supposed to be helpful to our citizens, not hurtful. So that's all I'm gonna say for tonight and I will read what you put in my inbox. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mark. And Rob, you have your camera on. John, did you have something?
Yeah. I watched two of their complete meetings and I watched a few of their podcasts. And they got some issues on that board too. So.
Yeah. Well, John, I think the next step we need to, I want to gather information. I want people to send us whatever they have. And I think we need to make some type of determination within the next couple of weeks of what we're gonna do.
You know, it seems like there's a lot of ideas there and there's five people on our board and there's seven people on that board. I'd like to see maybe that board go down to five.
Yeah, I think so too. I'm with you on that.
Move things along a little bit quicker and.
Hey, John, I agree with you.
All right. Let's move on.
Okay.
All right. Um, Rob, you had a comment?
Yeah, Mark kind of summed it up. It just seems like every time we go to these meetings, as Mark mentioned, we're gonna be going before them the fourth time in two weeks. So every time it's another two week delay. And then even after you get the final permit, they have to go through a 10 day waiting period. So now we're looking at something we started in early April, looking at mid-June before we can even attempt to put something in if it gets approved. I personally, after the last meeting, two weeks ago, they had mentioned wanting to mark out the 100 foot annual mean water line. I did it. The next day I called Janice on the phone, left her message saying, hey, I'm here. If you want to come up, I left my phone number and said, just come up and see it if you want to do it. And then it was the next meeting, they're like, well, you know, we had other things to do. We had, you know, we didn't have the time. We have a lot of permits. It's like, it just seems every single meeting is something else. And just, again, just the treatment. It was one minute, we're trying to write up these mitigation plans. And again, all we're asking to do is park a camper on land that's been developed for 25 years. Somebody puts in a concrete pavilion. They don't accept our mitigation plan, but they say, yeah, just go plant some blueberry bushes. Everybody loves blueberry bushes. So if you really look back at last night's meeting, I would encourage it and you, you really can see the difference in treatment between the parties that are involved. They also closed a couple of meetings last night, some requests for determinations, and they had actually some open items. And that is actually against Department of Environmental Protection. If you have open items from environmental species, they are not allowed to close the hearings. And yet last night they closed, I think, five or six hearings, requests for determinations with open items, which is a big no-no. And they actually said that two meetings ago to us, that that was a big no-no. When we asked them if we could just get a partial determination, they said, no, we can't close anything out until we have the whole thing. So I'll leave it at that. But thank you.
And anything that you would like to put into writing and send it to us, I'd appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else here for public comment?
Yeah, David, if I can speak up a little bit.
Yep, Johnny, go ahead.
So since I was on this river bylaw committee, the flood district, I've been following these meetings closely to kind of see what's going on, how Concom would react to them. And I haven't participated in the meetings, but I've listened to them. And after watching last night's meeting, it is disheartening that Mark, you know, I've talked to him throughout the whole process. He was one of the, I think, the second applicant for this whole process. And to keep getting pushed back, pushed back, it does seem like there's a little extra against him here. So, you know, would appreciate the, the board looking at this, you know, a little further.
Any materials that we can get in, in, in a written form is most helpful from anyone that wants to contribute. I'm more than happy to read everything that comes in.
Hey, David.
Yes.
Caroline, we got some other formality issues. Did you get all the information to all these boards on their Zoom meetings? Because first of all, they're not even doing their Zoom meetings correctly. They're not doing roll call votes. They don't have an agenda of, of the people that are on the board. They're, they're just one thing after another. Did you get that information to all the boards from the state?
I have not gotten that information since, since last week. No, we have been focusing on the warrant and the budget, John. I apologize. I know, and Jennifer, correct me if I wrong, if I'm wrong, but have they received in the past how to run those meetings?
Zoom meetings? Um, I can't say if they have or if they have not. I don't know. I know they weren't holding meetings for quite a while, but I do not know that.
Because all that direction's in the beacon and I read some of that stuff. And that's how, actually, that's how we ended up getting where we're at right now with our board. I had told David about it. David looked into it and, and we're, we're running our meeting the way the state wants us to run our meetings, the legal way. And some of these other boards in town are, are not doing that. We need to notify them.
I think all of our volunteer boards like we have and where conservation is appointed by us, it would be our due diligence as the select board to send out a memo and the rule of how they need to run their meetings. And I would like that to happen ASAP, please.
Absolutely. You know, we're, we're gonna get ourselves in trouble not doing what we're supposed to be doing here.
Yeah, I'm just gonna add, all elected officials get a open meeting package from the town clerk when they're sworn in. And I believe we have to verify every so often that we've read it. I don't know if that extends to appointees.
That's why I'm saying, Bill, I think we need to inform the people that we appoint, that this is how they need to run their meetings.
Yeah, and everything's changed with COVID and stuff like that, Bill. It's updated in that beacon, you know, once a month or every couple of months. There's always something the state's changing that we need to do as a small town board, you know?
Yeah. All right. We'll make sure we get it out to them. But I think the last one was Tony Fiden. You had a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to, well, first, first of all, it's not what I'm here to speak on, but I'd like to throw my support to Mr. Britton and the people on the river. This is, you know, I spent a lot of time on the river and these people are not causing, causing problems. They've been doing this for years. And, you know, very, very few problems. And I'm not sure why this is happening. You know, as a town, we should, you know, not, not let our, our people be harassed by this board or by the Board of Health. And I'd just like to support the people on the, on the river. And hopefully just let, let people enjoy the river. But what I wanted to speak about briefly was something that came up that I read about in today's paper. And this is an idea that seems to kind of rear its head every once in a while. That is the concept of a, of a split tax rate. And this came up in a, in an article about the budget and Mr. Zadonik, a town assessor, said that we may have to consider moving this way in the future due to plunging business values. And this is a, I want to be proactive. I know this is not on your agenda, but briefly, I think this split tax rate is a, is a terrible idea. And Mr. Zadonik, if you, I suggest that you take a ride to Pittsfield or Worcester and see how it's working out for them. See the empty storefronts and, and other, other issues that they have because although this idea sounds innocuous, where you have, you know, residential and commercial paying different rates and it even sounds beneficial and it may help you get through a business budgeting cycle. What inevitably happens is that that rate over, over time gets wider and wider. And in, it really becomes, eventually becomes a burden to businesses and they don't invest, they don't locate there and they don't invest in their businesses. And then, of course, the town has another budget crisis, a budget crunch, and they, they, they go after the businesses again and it just gets wider. And this is not, you know, just my opinion. If you can go to these towns and it's, and you know, some towns are kind of managing it, other towns, it's a disaster. Worcester, I'm sure would love to go back to a single rate, but they can't because it's, it's actually fiscally impossible for them to, and politically impossible for them to kind of, if they incrementally or not, go back to a single rate. It's just, it's not gonna happen. And they're, they've been suffering for years with this. And, and.
I'm confused, Mr. Faid. Are you saying that we should look at a split rate or keep it single like we have it?
I'm saying we should keep it single like we have it. And Mr. Zadonik suggested that we, suggested that we need to look at going to a split rate. Very much against the split rate. And, and I said, it's, it's caused so many problems in, in communities all over the state. It seems to be gaining popularity. That doesn't make it a good idea. And it's, it's really, it's, you know, we're, we're here, you know, you town officials are here to make tough budgeting decisions. And when you come up with a budget and it's, I don't want to see us in a situation where we say, hey, we got a budget crisis, which seems like Mr. Zadonik is saying, we have to split this and get, get through this budget cycle. And then, you know, be in a, be in a really tough situation because when you split the rate, you know, you have to look at what's going to happen, how it's going to affect our tax base in the long term, not just the budget cycle or two. And as I said, if you, if you look, if you look at towns that have done this, they are, they're kind of, they're in a vicious cycle where they can't, they can't join to a single rate again. So I'm, I'm against it. I know this is not on your agenda now, but it's probably going to come up. And I think a lot of people inherently, I'm always stupid for myself, but bad idea.
Always been a fine line between the businesses and the taxpayers. And I, I think if we split it exactly what you said, you know, we're gonna lose a lot of businesses and then where are we gonna come up with the money? The people can't afford what they're paying now in some cases and it's just not gonna work out. It's gonna, it's gonna end up being a disaster.
Well, one of the, one of the reasons we kept it as a single tax base is because it brought businesses in. And the businesses that come in pay a lot more taxes than our homeowners do. So we're actually collecting more money from our businesses than we are from our taxpayers. So this actually keeps the taxpayers' tax rate down. And I, I think it's kind of a wash in a way. And I, I certainly would not at this point entertain as my own personal feeling, but we'll have that discussion when it comes up.
Yeah, I think it's, it's coming up soon, I believe, right? But anyways, well, yeah, people just have to remember, the only reason we have a $12-ish tax rate is because of all the businesses that basically subsidize our budget and pay for a big chunk of our budget. You know, you got multimillion dollar buildings over by the mall there that are paying huge amounts of taxes. So just something to remember. All right. Thanks, Tony. Anybody else here? Last call for public comments before we move on?
I see Dan has his hand raised.
Dan. Am I nuts? I'm not seeing.
Zadonik had his hand raised.
Oh. I don't even see Dan on my Zoom for whatever reason. Dan, if you're there.
Yeah, I just want to give a quick rebuttal to that. A split tax rate doesn't generate any additional revenue for the town. We take in no additional taxes. And why I'm saying we might have to look at going to a split rate is that residential values are going up quite a bit for next year. Commercial values are gonna drop quite a bit next year. So what you're gonna see is that the tax burden is gonna shift from commercial onto residential, where you could be looking at an additional $200 for the average house from this shift, if it's not done. It's not a permanent thing that we need to do. But until COVID disappears and the values come back up, you can shift it back. It's not something that, that we're gonna bring in more revenue. And the other communities that had it before, their discrepancy, it's always been that way for them. Where residential and commercial, this goes back to two and a half in the early eighties. That residential properties had been assessed substantially lower than commercial, which is why two and a half came about. Commercial property owners sued. And the court said, you've got to bring everything up to full value.
Dan, when do you usually give your, your tax presentation and when do we have this discussion? I don't remember.
That would be after Fall Town Meeting. Usually it's early November, but this is something that I think we should discuss after this town meeting. Estimated numbers to have it for a longer period of time to look at.
All right. Well, then we'll add it to our list for after annual town meeting. So. All right. So we'll move on from public comments. Let's go down to 6.1. Electric, Community Electricity Aggregation Program. And Jennifer or Carolyn, do you want to talk about this?
Actually, John O'Rourke is here to talk about that, David.
John, all right, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board for allowing me to come before you tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Can I share my screen?
Jennifer will give you permission.
Jennifer, do you give me permission to share?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I just have a very short presentation for you. Essentially, we want to talk about the renewal of the community electricity aggregation. And essentially, for those of you, just a little refresher. In, in Massachusetts, Massachusetts was the first unity in the Commonwealth to pass a municipal aggregation law back in 2000. And essentially what it does, it allows towns to go out to bid for their residents and businesses who are on the basic service of the utility. And essentially what happens is the, the supply bid for, and that's the, the part that's in the aggregation. The delivery is handled by the community utility, in this case, Eversource. Customers get a single bill and on that bill, to identify there in the aggregation, it would say Hadley AGG for aggregation. You can see here you have supply and delivery. The program history, you launched in August 2019. You had a very good reception to the program at that time. And currently your supply agreement ends in November. So why are we talking about renewal now? Well, it's, we're talking about it now because we're in a very good energy market and we like to get these things done when the market is good. Our analysts give us guidance on these things. And we have, oh, aside from Hadley, we have another seven aggregations going out to bid between now and the end of the month. So it's very good, good time to go out. And that's why we're talking about it tonight. By customer class, your residential, the low income, you have 89 participants. All other residential, about 1,182 participants. Small, commercial and industrial, 120. And large, commercial, industrial, three. And again, your program is, is pretty average. You have about the same participation as many other communities. So essentially, this is what the program has looked like. That blue line, that, that 10-0-1 is the rate of the aggregation. That's for your standard product, which is the default product that everybody was put into when the program launched. And then you have an optional product of, it's 12-9, and that's for 100% renewable. You have very few participants in that. I believe it's three participants. So there isn't a lot of interest in that 100% product. That orange line is the Eversource rates. Your program started and Eversource was just slightly below. Then Eversource went up to the 11-6. That was during the winter, that first winter of last year. Then they came out with a very good rate for the summer and you dipped below the 10-1. And essentially, the reason for that was because we went into the COVID lockdowns. Energy demand weakened a bit. So they were in a very good shape to go out to bid and that's why that bid came in so low. Then the winter rate for this, this winter 2021 is 10-0-7. And that'll go, and that'll adjust again later on. But essentially, this is the way the program looks. You can see that the, the difference between the orange line, when the orange line is above the blue line, it's a gain. When it's below the blue line, it's a loss. So essentially, you've done pretty well here. And we expect that, as I say, we'll, we'll get a very good bid moving forward. Proposed timeline for early May. Again, we're doing the presentation tonight. We just have to finalize the product options. And again, you probably should stick exactly the way you are with the default at no more renewable energy than is required by the state and the 100% option. You have to vote to designate a signatory to sign the new electricity supply agreement. We've already gone out with the RFB, that's the request bids. We had a, originally had the schedule, the, the pre-bid meeting scheduled for tomorrow. But we heard earlier in the week that the bidders or competitive suppliers needed more time to do the bids. So we've shifted this out to Thursday, the 20th, and the bid day out to Tuesday, the 25th. And again, what happens on that, that pre-bid meeting, so we get indicative pricing from the suppliers that bid, we talk it over with town administrator and anyone on the board who wants to, to see that. Make a decision on what you think would be best for the town. And again, that's, a lot of that is done in pre-bid so that there are no surprises on bid day. Because on bid day, what happens is we get the executable prices in and we have about an hour to decide on term and price from the suppliers that bid. And essentially, the way, way things have been happening now since the lockdown is that we've been doing electronic signing with the suppliers, which has worked out very well. What we do here, we go silent. We don't say anything about what the bid was until September. Then we have education and outreach materials go out. We update the, the Hadley CEA website. We do another presentation to the board. And of course, that's recorded and people can watch that. We do education and outreach through November. And it's a seamless enrollment, which means that everybody who's involved in, at every, any level, the program is automatically switched over to the new supplier. And part of that outreach is a letter to everyone who participates saying, you're participating in the program. This is the way it's been. This is how it's going to change. And it's just a simple, seamless enrollment. And, and again, essentially tonight, you just have to decide on the standard option or default option and the premium 100. And as I, as I said, I really recommend that you stay with exactly what you have right now. And again, you just need to designate a signatory for the electricity supply agreement. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Select board members, anything?
Yeah, we had a bunch of complaints when it dropped down below that line. And this was more of a push-on to the people rather than the people involved in, in, in their bills, you know? I just, there, there was a lot of people that wanted to drop below, below the line that opt out of it. This was something David did and convinced us to vote for. And I don't know if it really is the best for the town right now.
Just to be clear, it wasn't me, David, that did it, but.
No, our administrator, not our chairman.
Yeah, I mean, I, I use this program. I, I was a little bothered by the fact I had to opt out of it if I didn't want to enroll in it or I didn't want to use the program. The automatic enrollment was an issue for me. I think it should be the opposite. If somebody wants to make a change, they should actively make the change rather than force everybody in the town to opt out of it like happened last time. So I don't know if there's a way to approach that differently, but that's the only issue I had with it.
David, if I could, if I could clarify that. Essentially, the way the law is written, it's an opt-out program. And essentially, every law that's been written in the country has been modeled on the Massachusetts law. There's really, there's this, when the law was written, the, the idea was that the town would be in charge of putting this together because they figured the town was the best organizing functionary within each community. And, and certainly, the idea of the opt-out is actually, there's a very good business case for that. Because what happens is within that 30-day opt-out period, everyone who wants to, to be in is in the program. In our programs, the suppliers know. In our programs, the suppliers know will get about eighty to eighty five percent of the eligible consumers. Participating in the program, so they know what they're bidding on. If it was an opt in program. They would have no idea whether it would be eighty or eighty five percent or sixty percent or forty percent or twenty percent. And quite frankly, they wouldn't bid on it. Recently, both New Hampshire and Rhode Island. Who had aggregation laws that were opt in laws. And found nothing happened in many years. Just changed their laws to opt out programs. And now they're starting to see interest from suppliers. The suppliers have to know what they're bidding on. All right, and that's the reason for the opt out. As I say, because we're a national company and our suppliers know us, we only deal with national suppliers. They know us, they have relationships with us in terms of. They know when we do an aggregation, we're going to get a certain amount of those eligible. Customers into that program. And that's extremely important for them when they're bidding. Because they don't have to put a lot of risk premium into their bid. Because they know what they're dealing with. It's like anyone who is who has runs a business that answers. Requests for for quotes. If if. The the company said to you, well, we really don't know what we want, then you're not going to bid on that. Because you don't know how to price that. It's the same principle here with with these these suppliers. And that's the the reason for the opt out program. And I would say that most of the the the. Criticism we get is because of that. Okay, because people say, well, why it's why isn't an op in rather than opt out? Because the business case is solid for an opt out and it makes the most sense on a business level.
So I have a question. What happens about new residents in town? How do they get notified about this? Or do they just automatically get thrown into it?
But no, they're not automatically put into the program. What happens is that probably on a three to five month basis. We get newer, we get the new accounts from ever source. They'll give us that list of new residents that come into a neighborhood. And we'll send them a letter. And we'll say, you know. Town is in a program. If you wanna wanna be in it. You don't have to do anything. If you don't, you cannot. So they are, they get the same notification as those who are in the the launch of the program.
Thank you.
Do we have to make a decision tonight?
A decision on on what?
Up staying opt in or do we just or you want us to designate somebody for the signature for the electricity supply agreement?
Right, that's that's really the only thing that you need to decide on tonight is the the to designate a signatory.
So just to be clear, if we say, yes, we're going to stick with what we have, which is the standard plan and designate someone to sign and go forward and. You know, we don't, in the end, like the bids that we get. Are we under any obligation to stick with the program? Or can we just say, we don't like that savings, we can go back to ever source or whatever we want to do?
Well, what what we will do, certainly, we're we're early here. And we'll go out for bid. If we don't think it's a good bid, we're not gonna, we're gonna, I can advise you to do anything with it. We would wait until the fall to do something or to August, okay? But as I say, we're in a very good market now. We're going out with a number of other communities and we think it's a very good time to renew the contract.
But that that didn't quite answer my question. If 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 we don't like what we see, are we obligated to continue with the program or to sign? I know you said.
Not not at all, not at all.
Like to designate.
We've never had, we've never had a town not renew.
Okay.
I'd like to designate our.
On your side of the table. Okay, we we want you to do well. And that's, you know. Whole point.
Joyce.
I I'd like to designate our town administrator Carolyn Brennan to sign for us on the electricity agreement.
I'll second that.
And could we, could we just a friendly amendment? Could we add that we'll stick with the standard program to that motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion by Joyce, second by John. Any other discussion on this program?
We really need to notify all the public that if they want to opt out, that they need to opt out. Because like I said, when I dropped below the line, my phone was ringing off the hook. What did you guys do to us now? Some of them weren't even aware of it.
Well, you know, if if I could let you know, we we want to field all those calls. I'm not sure why they weren't referred to us. But we don't want, we don't want municipal officials burdened with those calls. I'll give you my cell phone number. And you get a call from anybody, you can refer them to me or you can have them email me. Because that's part of our job is to take care of those questions.
Do you have any data that we could have that would show what our price that through this program? Has averaged across the year or how much the average house pays compared to what it would have been had they stayed, say, with ever source?
I I can get you that information.
I think that would be useful, thank you.
I'll I'll talk to our our suppliers on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, Jennifer.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Chungalo.
Yes.
Givitz.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thank you all, have a good night and we'll.
You also, thank you.
All right, we'll go to six point two covid nineteen update. And before I get into the vaccine policy, Carolyn, do you have any operating update for town hall or anything else you want to share regarding covid?
It's going well and we're seeing traffic, but it's been managed fine. And Teresa's here five days a week, nine to twelve.
Oh, actually, Dr. Moser's here. Dr. Moser, do you have any covid updates for opening, closing, anything? You're you're muted. You're muted, Dr. Moser.
Sorry, um, no, I just got the weekly report. There were three cases, three positive cases in Hadley. And I know we're have one student in the schools and, you know, the state's reopening. All the new guidelines are available on the on the mass.gov website.
Okay. All right, so I put, I I wrote this letter, it's under vaccine policy. And so anyone that can, it's in board docs for anyone that wants to read it in the public. But basically, it says that the town of Hadley is not going to prohibit somebody from coming to a public meeting based on their vaccine status. Obviously, we still have to finish the or follow the governor's rules as far as masks and social distancing and whatever else. But there's been some, I was approached by some town employees that were a little bit upset about. The idea of having to show a vaccine card in order to enter a town building when they work for the town. And so I just wanted to make it clear what our policy is, that we're not going to prohibit the public from attending meetings, town meetings, using town facilities or lands or any. If they discriminate against people because of their vaccine status. In my mind, it's like anything else. You make your own personal health decisions, whether good or bad. And, you know, if you make the wrong decision, you suffer the consequences. But it shouldn't be up to the town to decide that. Now, if the state comes out and says that vaccines are mandatory for certain employees, whatever. You know, it is what it is. But Governor Baker, when he was asked about that, said he wasn't even going to go down that road at this point. So I'm assuming that's not going to be mandatory for for state employees. But I just wanted to put something on record, so hopefully we can not have an issue.
Yeah, David, I just had a couple of, I just saw this a few hours ago, but I just. Had a couple of, you know, just general comments, so I just wanted to to make here and then you, you know, all can do it, what you would like. You know, first, it it seemed to me, you know. Why the select board would be making this kind of a policy? In other words, it's being made from a political as opposed to a public health perspective. The other, one other thing was, you know, treating the circumstance around the covid nineteen vaccine, but. Making a policy that would affect possible future vaccines. In other words, it was, it seemed pretty open ended to me. In other words, you know, what if next year there's a new measles vaccine or some other vaccine? It it just, it sounded to me like an anti vaccine policy. It seemed very general, you know, that it wasn't specifically regarding covid nineteen vaccine. I think in town here, we have two vulnerable populations, our seniors and our school. And, you know, they have committees that are charged with making decisions and. You know, certainly where the schools and the senior center come into play, you know, perhaps we should broaden the perspective. You know, before the select board goes ahead and and, you know, make such a broad policy here. And the last thing that I would say is that, you know, fundamentally, I mean. Issues of 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 public health. I would seem to me should involve some kind of input from the Board of Health, which is charged with. Keeping our our residences as safe and healthy as possible, you know, before something like this would come to a vote for for the select board. So that that that's my perspective on this.
I don't really feel like it's very political. I just think it's following state guidelines and legality reasons of things. You can't deny people access to publicly funded public buildings. I don't think you can do that.
Over a back, over a vaccine.
Right. The reason I put this on here from the select board standpoint is because we set our policies for hiring policies, our building access policies, that falls on the on the select board.
Yeah, no, I I I get all that. I that I think all of that's fine, but I'm thinking more about, you know, the school, community. And and our senior center, certainly, you know, I I I have not had children in the Hadley Public Schools, but. There are vaccinations that are required, correct, for attending school?
Yeah, that's why it says unless otherwise required by law, because there are state required vaccines. And if Governor Baker comes out and says a vaccine is required at some point or that the legislature does, then so be it. But until that happens.
You don't think the school committee should have some kind of input into into that or, you know, Dr. McCann, you know, somebody from from the school?
The whole state mandated, no.
They can bring it up to their board, but Mrs. Moser, I don't want you to tell me I shouldn't get a flu shot or I should get a flu shot. You know what I'm saying? At this point, the CDC is not. These are just emergency temporary shots that they're giving out right now that are not really proven. You know, I I'll be the first to admit I had covid and I'm not going to get the shot, I'll tell you right now.
Can I make a clarification? As soon as you know that I I also work in the healthcare business. And even though that I can say ninety nine percent of my employees or the people that I work with have received the vaccination. We are still following CDC guidelines within our office. We mask, we goggle when we come in contact with patients. And I think the town does have some type of responsibility. We are not requiring our 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 employees throughout the town to. Require them to get the covid vaccine. It's a personal thing that people have to make that decision for themselves. But we should also not be able to limit them. I think it's really, we're now, we're getting down to the law of it all. But if we continue to follow the CDC guidelines and having people admit going into our public buildings. We don't ask everybody when they come into our town hall if they've had the vaccine or not. But we do require them to wear a mask and to sanitize and wash their hands when they come in and do it when they go out and. We're still.
Yeah, I I I I totally get what you're saying. You know, I I'm not, first of all, I'm not suggesting that, you know, you check people for their vaccine status before they show up for work or, you know, come to work at the town hall. I'm not, I'm not advocating for any of that.
Correct, but I think that's what we were faced with, Susan. I think that's where this all came about.
I I I understand that. I I'm just, and, you know, I'm I'm just saying that it's it's. It seems to me that it's broader. And more open ended than perhaps it needs to be.
Yes.
Well, when I brought the opening plan for the senior center to the board. A month and a half ago. It was very specific that we were not going to open unless people had vaccines because our population is so vulnerable. And there are now so many new strains going around. And that's the process that we are currently working under.
And I think the issue is that now that, I guess, things are open. You know, we're starting to hear from members of the public that they're not happy with that. And the fact that somebody might be a taxpayer but can't use this particular building program, you know, whatever.
If they actively have covid, we don't want them to come and we're not, how do we stop that?
Well, and that's true. You you screen people, you have them sign in, you do whatever, but that's different than asking or requiring somebody to.
It's not because there are so many people who have covid with no symptoms. We have a vulnerable population.
Hi, David, this is Ed. If I could have a moment, I I might be able to add a clarifying point.
All right, sure.
So it's kind of public knowledge that the E E O C has ruled that, you know, employers. Can require vaccines. So then, of course, that spilled over into certain things like towns, public bodies. And, you know, of course, as a town, there's some conflicting information there because we are both an employer, but we're also a public service provider. It it has not been ruled that public bodies can require vaccines, you know, for access to services. And I would, I, if I were a betting man, I would say we'd be opening ourselves up. To a wide discrimination suit because, you know, it's, you know, when you talk in terms of things, even if you were to roll into health equity and a number of other items. You're really limiting who can access public funded services. And, you know, from, you know, a legal standpoint, I've I've been keeping tabs on, you know, what town council is putting out there, what other towns are doing. What the state guidance is, divisional local services. I really don't believe requiring a vaccine is a is a measure. That the town as a political body, even though it's apolitical in terms of affiliation, but as a as a public body, I don't. I don't, I don't think it's a position the town should attempt to take.
Good point.
Can I please speak?
Yes, Haley, go ahead.
Um, so for for those who don't know me, I'm Haley Wood, I'm the director of the senior center. This point is very relevant for our programming and how we've been doing business since past this past February. The select board unanimously voted to approve the senior center's proposal to permit in person recreational program. Only to people who are willing to verify full vaccination status. So that that's, that is something that you did vote on and approve. Of course, you have the right to reverse that decision. But all of our actions and all of our programming decisions have been based on that decision. And we have a very rich and full array of in person programming that takes. That's based on the I the notion that all of those participants who are willingly. Providing information about their vaccine status are safer for doing so. Our proposal was based on a belief in science and we and I I do believe in the efficacy of the vaccines. And I believe that the reduction in our covid numbers is a direct result of the vaccine. So I support that and I want to state that. I would have appreciated being approached about this proposal, this policy before. I learned about it very recently. I just want to state that as well. As we all know, there are many legal precedents for vaccines. Of course, the covid vaccine is not yet a legal requirement, but. It's well within keeping of of norms that we. that we all have been a part of all our lives, that vaccines do become a legal requirement. For example, for attending public school. If this passes, we will need to rethink all of our programming decisions and two months of work to provide a lot of in-person, safe indoor activities of a recreational nature for people. And I want to point out that no essential service has been denied anyone based on vaccine status. It's only recreational programming for which we have attached this requirement. And I would appreciate knowing whether or not you as a board, as well as the Board of Health, since Dr. Mosler is here, would support our current level of in-person programming with a lifted vaccination requirement. If you're comfortable with our gathering in person in, in small numbers and well-spaced and maintaining social distancing and wearing masks, if that feels comfortable for you, that would really provide me with strong guidance for making decisions going forward. That's what I want to say.
So I'll, I'll let the rest of the board chime in, but I will say, yes, I would be comfortable with that. I'm not asking you to cut programming. Obviously, people need to be informed that, of the change if they thought that it was only vaccinated people and now that's changed because that may affect who goes to those programs. You mentioned that it's recreational, that no essential services are being denied. You know, to, to me, that shows that somebody doesn't necessarily 100%. You know, they're not missing out on, on something that's critical to their, their wellbeing or safety if it's a recreational program. So they can make that choice whether to go or not, what's best for them. I don't think we should be making that decision. You know, I, this isn't arguing with science. I'm not arguing that it works or doesn't work. I, I, obviously it does and millions of people are taking it and that's great. But if it's from the town, we shouldn't require it. Go ahead, Amy.
Do you require the people that are going to also have gotten a flu shot?
No. Because the flu generally does not cause death.
Oh, yes, it does. Wait, 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 wait. On, on average, in a year in the United States, maybe it's 40,000 deaths a year from the flu. It might be a little bit less, but I don't want to misquote. This past year, we've lost 550,000 reported deaths due to COVID-19. So let's, let's not compare the influenza virus with the COVID-19 virus when we're talking about morbidity and mortality. You're, you're talking about a whole different ballgame.
I was just curious, but also I wanted to say that we, if we allow this to continue, we are taking away people's right to choose and we're taking away a service. And we're not allowing people to be involved in things that they want to be involved with that their taxpayer dollars go to. And I agree with David that if they are afraid and they don't want to go, that is their choice to go or not to go. But if they got the vaccine and it's effective, they shouldn't discriminate against people that choose not to.
Yeah, I, can I just bring up another scenario?
Go ahead.
The long run, if we start to open up our meetings and we go back to in-person meetings, which I'm hoping that we're going to be able to do maybe towards the fall, which I think everybody is, might be looking forward to doing. Well, when we do that and we still may be under some type of CDC guidelines, if we have people come in and have to wear their masks, I mean, this thing is not over completely yet. But the thing of it is, is that we're not going to be able to ask people if they're vaccinated or not, if they care to join our meetings. And I think this is what it's all boiling down to. If we are holding a meeting and people are coming to that meeting to participate, do we actually have the right to ask them if they've been vaccinated or not? If they're one of the participates in the meeting? We're kind of, kind of going on a fine line here of privacy, HIPAA rules and people's own rights of whether or not they care to be vaccinated. So those are the things that we really need to take into consideration when we do have in-person meetings that might be being held at the senior center. Do we have the right to have people say whether or not they've been vaccinated? If they're not seniors? So, you know, I, I'd like us to kind of iron this out. If, if we still are participating and doing what we need to do for CDC guidelines, I'm not exactly sure whether or not somebody is actually needing to tell us whether or not they've been vaccinated as long as they use the proper guidelines.
So we're just starting to watch this go through the court. I'm, I do the travel programs and there are travel companies who are requiring people to have vaccinations before they go on their cruise or you have to have a vaccination now before you can go to Europe. So the question is what the courts are going to say as this works through. And I think we should be really careful because if the courts say it's legal to ask for vaccines and we have stopped and somebody is affected because of that decision, then we have a different problem.
Leisure activity. I'm, I'm, I want to, can I call a vote?
You just need to make a motion.
I move to approve the vaccine policy as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Amy, second by Joyce. Anybody want to have further discussion on this?
Yeah, you know, your question about influenza, over the past five or six years, I don't think it's been more than 30% has it effective? But they've all been approved. The difference is with this COVID shot, it hasn't been approved yet. As soon as it's approved, I have no problem asking for or mandating shots for, for the public, for, for our employees.
Here's, here's the difference that I work for Mass General. We are all mandated. We are all mandated or we cannot work for Mass General unless we receive the flu vaccine. We are not mandated to receive the COVID vaccine and we all work for Mass General. So there's a little bit of differential, you know, whatever we're doing between the flu and the COVID. I would have thought that Mass General would have made all of us get a COVID since we are in direct line contact with patients and they have not done that. But they did do it with the flu shot. So they said you cannot work for us unless you get a flu vaccine. So there's a little bit of hesitant here on everybody following certain guidelines. But I'm, I'm in favor of us following CDC guidelines and that's why I voted yes for us to continue on the path that we're doing and making sure that we're all, you know, following those guidelines, masks, hand washing and as such, when you participate in anything.
And talking about.
State numbers are down and we finally had zero deaths.
Yeah. Talking about ma- mandates, Joyce. I'm unfortunately mandated to pay a whole bunch of taxes in this town. And so I don't think it's fair that I'd be mandated to pay a whole bunch of taxes and then I can't walk into town hall or I can't, maybe you'll shut off my water sewer because I, you know, I didn't get a shot kind of thing. Or maybe I'm an employee of the town, not saying, I'm, I'm not an employee of the town. But if I was and I chose not to be vaccinated, that I, maybe I couldn't work in certain locations or I couldn't, you know, use town vehicles. That's the problem here and that's what needs to be clarified.
I don't think that's happening anywhere. I feel like the only, I think that the only relevant scenario in the town of Hadley right now is the Hadley Senior Center. We are the, we are the town building that has created a vaccine requirement for involvement in in-person recreational programming. I'm not aware of any other kind of vaccine requirement that has reared its head in the town for employees or taxpayers. Could be setting a precedence.
It, it's also come up in town hall. It's also come up in other areas of employees. Other people, medical, yep, the schools, asking people about their, you know, proof of vaccine or, or whatnot. So that's, this is a policy, just to clarify, we're not going to go down that road. If the state changes their mind and mandates it, it becomes a law, then so be it. We don't have a choice but to follow the state law or the federal law if it becomes a federal law. But it, it hasn't and it seems like there's no desire to do so, so.
Honestly, I'm a wait-and-see kind of guy. I have not got the vaccine yet, as I told you. If, if they prove this and it's 100% like the influenza, then, then I will be getting it. You know, but until that point, we're just not there yet, I don't feel personally. And a lot of people are like that.
Okay, anything else from the select board? Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
No.
Changelou?
Yes.
Miss Kevitz?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to town meeting warrant, 7.1. Carolyn, do you want to, what do we need to do? Just vote on the, signing the warrant?
Yes, you did, you had put one article on hold until this week and I think it was the very first one, CPA Emergency Rental Assistance, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, so we did see a memo or a bulletin or email from Molly Keegan in regards in reducing that rental to $25,000. And again, it would come out of CPA money. I don't have a problem with that. If it's not used, it stays in CPA money. But that has to be changed by Randy, I believe, correct?
Yeah, I'll give you an update on that as well. So I spoke with legal and I spoke with Randy. And the agreement is, is that because CPA cannot meet before the close, the posting of the warrant, Randy is going to read the article as, the 100,000 is going to stay posted. But Randy is going to read the article as 25,000 based on a vote from CPA and Amy's confident that she'll be able to pull the group together to get that pop, that reduction to 25,000. And so that, that's going to avoid having to do an amendment and, but will just take up time. So that's how we're moving forward.
Okay, sounds good. Do we need a vote on that or not?
You voted on each, did you vote on each one last week?
I don't think we voted on CPA though, did we? Or the rental, did we?
Well, we voted on that one. The first articles are from last fall and we had voted on all of those.
Right, but we, this is a change in the number. I'm going to make a motion to accept that on town meeting that Randy Eisner be able to change that $100 down to $25,000. And I would accept that from the select board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, motion by Joyce, second by Amy. And Sue was waving at the camera. Sue, do you have something?
No, it was just that you held off voting on that last week.
Oh, it was, okay.
I had it in my notes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank God somebody's keeping notes, Susan.
Yeah, where's our minutes to our meetings?
Hold on, let's.
As soon as I have more time to get them done, John, I will. I'm incredibly busy, but thank you.
But let's do this one first. Any other discussion on the CP, the recommendation for the CPA rental assistant article? All right, Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yes.
Miss Kevitz?
No.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and then do we need to vote to sign the warrant or is this? Yes.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to make, uh, make sure where I'm looking at it, but to the budget that voted to change the HR was the only thing that we changed is that in the new warrant to keep that $20,000 less from the finance committee.
Yes, so, so the in, the in-house finance team has met with capital and FinCom. And so the budget that you'll be, that will be coming to, that will be putting all the numbers in, that will be placed on the warrant is the set, is, does include the HR being restored to full-time.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to accept the articles as they are for town meeting.
Second.
All right, Jennifer, you, you look confused. Do we need a motion to post the warrant or sign the warrant?
Motion to sign the warrant.
Make a, sign the warrant then, thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so motion by Joyce, second by John. Any other discussion on the warrant? Carolyn's probably happy to get this done and over with finally.
I'll be happy tomorrow.
Yeah, we, we did vote, we did vote on the finance committee's requests anyway, last week, didn't we?
We did step for the HR and we voted yes on that.
They, they hadn't voted on the whole warrant and budget until today.
Okay.
Do we need to do the distribution of our articles?
Yes, you do.
Can we do the, can we take the vote first though, please?
Sorry.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yes.
Miss Kevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Okay, Joyce, move on.
Till we make, could we divvy up the articles?
Oh, who's going to speak to them?
Yep.
Sure. Find the list here.
I think we go down to.
Last week.
Stretch energy code was the first one on town meeting that we, was left over.
Yep, because we have CPA for the first two, planning board for the next two. So number five, stretch energy code. We would, did Tommy speak about that or was that Christian last time that talked about that?
Tommy?
It was Tim.
Tim.
Tim, yeah, okay. We'll let, we'll let Tommy as building inspector talk about it because that way he can answer any questions about what it means, I think.
That sounds good.
Somebody from that committee also be available to talk if there are further questions?
Um, yes, I believe Jack Sakowski will be available and also Mark Radinsky, who is the gentleman who presented last time. And he's actually planning on attending the public forum as well. But I believe he's planning on attending for questions as well.
Sounds good.
All right, so we'll skip that one for the select board. Six, grants and gifts. That's usually, David always spoke about that. But Carolyn, do you want to talk about that or Linda as far as how the grants and gifts work?
So if that's a consent agenda, and this is just education for me, do you do each consent agenda separately as a presentation?
Actually, no, we don't.
Okay. Because I can, I can talk about the consent agenda because I, revolving account is usually a consent agenda as well and I'm going to be talking about that, why it's, why I took it out of consent agenda.
Yeah, they usually, we usually, we usually read it off and then if there's something that needs to be pulled by the public, then we'll pull it out and vote on it separately.
So Carolyn, you can have the whole consent agenda then.
And if you do it right, there won't be any questions.
That's right.
There we go.
All right, so then we'll move down to number 12. That's, you're going to take care of that one as well?
Yes, and the only change there is I just, I added to that motion because we are taking out the, the electrical inspections, the Russell School and the after-school program because they're not, they're, they're no longer functioning and we're returning that to the general fund.
Okay.
So are you saying that seven, eight, nine, 10 and 11, or 10 are all consent agenda?
Yep, six through 11 are consent.
Okay, so those are all yours, yay.
That's consent for return, right? That's consent for return, right?
Revolving fund, John, or?
Yeah, that's all consent for returns. The budget would be the first one, and then these articles would be returns, correct?
I I'm sorry, I don't know what you mean by returns.
Uh, balances, balance returns.
Uh, well, the revolving account is regarding what is allowed to be spent out of those funds. It's not a balance, but we can have those balances available if you like them.
All right.
The rest of the consent are just they're not controversial and you guys, it's kind of standard, you have it at every, at every annual town meeting.
Yeah, as long as the balances are there, they're going to be written in anyway, so.
All right.
Thirty amounts.
John, how about you taking the revolving fund?
All right. Never done that before.
No.
We've never put the the balances in the revolving account. It's always been what's allowed to run through the revolving account.
Yeah, there was X amount of dollars to be spent every time.
Yeah, I was going to do the balances of the accounts that we're going to be returning.
Yeah.
But you'll know what's going back into the general fund. I wasn't going to do the balances of all of them.
That's what I meant by the returns. There are returns on
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
All right, so is John taking twelve?
See what I'm talking about, then you can do it, Carolyn.
All right, so John, you have twelve?
Sure.
All right, I'll take thirteen unless anybody else wants it.
That's yours, DPW.
Fourteen, we have the levy assessment study. I I think the gentleman from the engineering firm is going to be there, maybe Carolyn, you'd probably be best to talk about this.
Yeah.
Have somehow vote, we can vote to have them at the beginning, right? That's part of Randy's start that lets people who have pertinent information, even if they're not town residents, speak.
He does that per, whenever the article comes up, uh, he he will say so-and-so will speak to this, even though they're not a town resident.
Okay.
We just need to let Randy know that ahead of time.
Yeah, I think the floor votes to accept him to speak.
Yeah.
All right, so then we have the general fund, fifteen, general fund budget.
That usually is the finance committee and then anything other questions, then we would follow up on that.
Okay, good enough for me. Enterprise fund budgets.
So what's what's going on with that? That's water, sewer, and what else?
Cable, maybe? Hadley Media?
Hadley Media.
All right, Carolyn, do you want to do that one since you'll?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, seventeen, capital.
I'm I'm sorry, who's doing sixteen?
David.
Uh, you know, Carolyn's doing sixteen.
No, that's enterprise fund. You said you were doing that.
No, no, I was
That's waters, that's water, sewer, and cable. You said yes.
Oh, okay, sure.
It's yours.
All right. I think you just talked me into it somehow, but okay.
Absolutely.
To be clear, David, you are doing Article sixteen.
Okay.
No, that was a question. David, you are doing Article sixteen?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a rough one tonight. All right, seventeen is a capital item, so I think Paul McCretsky will be there. He's our our new chair of the capital committee. So I will ask him if he's willing to speak to these.
Okay.
Uh, if not, then I could take it or Carolyn could take it, I guess.
If if you wouldn't mind, if you would, and if I'm at a line, let me know if if you would let Chris and I do that together.
Yeah.
We've been working really closely together on that, and I think it gets complicated.
Okay.
Okay.
Eighteen is the capital ambulance purchase. I will let Chief Spanknebel talk about that one, I think. He'd be the best one.
I'd like to chime in on that, please.
Certainly.
So how about Joyce and Spanky?
There you go.
Who's laughing?
I'll mute.
Only Joyce can get away with that stuff.
Yeah.
All right, nineteen is CPA project extensions.
That would be CPA.
Yep, actually nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, nineteen to twenty-four. Is that all CPA?
Uh, what's the, no, Concom, you got you, Grillinski and Hendrick Properties.
Okay.
Amy, well, Amy may be willing to speak on that. Amy, that's how she did it tonight. She presented both for Congress Conservation and CPA because it just was confusing if you had two different people talking about it. I don't know, I'm throwing that out there.
Yeah, Amy's good.
Okay, so nineteen to twenty-four, we'll say Amy or possibly conservation if they really want to talk about it. Uh, twenty-five, that is planning board, so we don't need to worry about that. Twenty-six. Yep, Jane can do that one. How about twenty-seven, the moderator?
Randy talk about it.
Okay. And twenty-eight, parking man.
I'll take it.
All right, Joyce and Chief Mason.
Joyce and chief.
Yep.
Joyce and the chiefs, this is a new band.
Yeah. It's my boys.
All right, that's it, I think.
Excuse me, can I just ask thirteen, who is doing the DPW projects?
David Phil.
David.
John got out on this.
John got in there on the first part.
Okay, Linda's waving her hand.
Um, yeah, sixteen, the enterprise fund budget, that's a budget article. Finance committee should do that too.
Sixteen, yes.
Fifteen and sixteen. There used to be just one budget article, but it got split to general fund and enterprise. That that's, that's finance committee.
All right, thank you, Linda, for saving me.
You could find something else to do, David, I'm sure.
We'll find him something else to do, no problem.
That twelve's available, in case you want it.
The public likes to hear from you, John.
Yep.
Yeah, sometimes.
All right, Carolyn, anything else on the warrant?
I don't think so.
All right, the select board just has to stop by Jennifer's office and sign as soon as possible.
Yes, and if you're okay, it might just be the last page because Susan and I are going to hunker down tomorrow and go line item by line item. And it, just so we can get it to Jessica, so do you trust me? If it's just the last page.
We trust God, we trust him.
So I need to see all of your smiley, happy faces before four tomorrow, but I really would like to see you by three o'clock at the very latest, okay?
Boy.
Don't get out till three.
I'll be waiting for you at three ten.
I got a meeting on the library at two, so it's going to be close.
Can I do like a virtual signature?
Hmm, when are you leaving for the airport?
As soon as this meeting is over.
I'll meet you as you're driving by the door. I'll be standing outside the building waiting for you.
Are you really?
Yes, I will, because it's a it's a warrant and it needs a little signature.
I can sign it on my way out of town.
I will be literally waiting for you at the side of the building. Don't hit me.
Okay, well.
He's flying to Texas.
Eha.
You have your key. She can, she can always leave it for you.
That's what I was going to say, just, oh, yeah, so you don't have to wait for it.
Downstairs for on the table where everybody signs in, and then Sue who gets in at the crack of dawn can pick it up.
I'll call Amy when we're done and work it out.
All right.
Lovely, all right. Okay, uh, next, we're going to go to eight point one, use of the town commons, and this is a council on aging event, I believe. So Jane or if Haley's here would like to talk about that?
I'm happy to speak about it. Um, this would be the second time that we've used the town common during COVID. Um, it's for Friday, May twenty-first with the rain date of the twenty-eighth. We would use the north end of the south, south of Route Nine Common under the trees. Um, at noon time for an hour and a half, we put up two ten-by-ten pop-up tents, and we have musicians play and people come and bring their chairs and sit appropriately distanced.
Sounds like a good event.
It's fun. Last year we had about thirty people, and it was, it was like something that was going on in COVID in June and you know, seniors really shouldn't be locked up in their homes. It's bad for their health, so this is a good thing to get them out, and it's out in the fresh air.
Yeah, motion to approve, absolutely. Hello, buddy.
Could we get a second?
Second.
Did everybody go to sleep?
Yeah, Joyce and second by John and Jennifer, you, did you have something to say too?
I was just going to let you know that even though their signatures aren't there, um, police, fire, and DPW all approved it today. Um, they just did it after I posted it, so, but everybody's approved it.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloo?
Yes.
Miss Kevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, last item I see is the town administrator report. Carolyn, is there anything you want to hit that you didn't cover already?
Yeah, I'll let you know that the buyers for North Hadley Village Hall have signed a purchase and sales agreement, and that is here for your signatures as well. Uh, I'm just going to give you some dates, just a reminder that the real estate taxes were due on May third. Um, and the demands will be issued on May seventeenth. The high school graduation is May twenty-eighth at six P M. The Hadley Mothers Club has recycling on May fifteenth, as well as the Hadley cleanup by the Climate Change Committee. And there's more info about that on the website, and Jane, I don't want to steal your thunder. Uh, I was going to mention the veterans' drive-by on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, so the senior center has sent out invitations today to a hundred and ninety-four Hadley residents who are veterans. They're not necessarily all seniors, um, to drive by on the twenty-eighth at one o'clock past the senior center. We're going to have coffee and donuts to go, just to thank them for their services since we can't do and we've, we've done other things like this, and last year we had a program for them, and we had about fifty of the veterans actually show up, so it's really exciting to know that they care and that they know that we care. Also, Senator Comherd and Representative Carey will be there as well as our county administrator, and the Veterans Service out of North Hampton will be there. And they'll be handing out information that would be useful to veterans that they might not otherwise have.
And can we just say that there's going to be a change in our uh, Memorial Day that actually we will be going to the cemeteries on Memorial Day, which we always have done it on Sunday. Uh, we will be doing it on a Monday, and the board did approve a bus uh, for our veterans to go to the cemeteries, and I believe that our fire department was going to be doing their color guard is also, as I think was what Mike had said. Um, so just a reminder that our remembrances will be on Memorial Day itself and not on Sunday. So that was a little bit of a change. Um, we did not actually
Does the select board go to that as a group?
We usually have participated in all the cemeteries, yes. Um, I've done it now for, how about thirty-one years because I did it was on school committee, so, yep. Um, so anyway, like to continue that practice, and we have not said anything. I think there will be a representative to the um, Mike is planning on sending a fire truck, number one, to Hatfield on Sunday where they have their parade, and the parade over there is just going to be a drive, drive around. It's not going to be any marching or anything of that sort, so I believe, I don't know if any select board were planning on doing that. I I haven't really committed to it. I don't know if anybody else has to participate in the Hatfield Parade, which is on Sunday.
Are are the police going to send a cruiser over there too?
Um, I imagine they will. I will talk to Mike about that so he can coordinate it with Mike Spankeneble.
Yeah, all right. Be nice if both of them went over.
Yeah. Other than that, I think that's all I had for the Memorial Day thing.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be two P M. At the, what is normally done, it will be two P M. Uh, at the Legion on the afternoon for the raising of the flag and the uh, fire salute.
I would like to add to Carolyn's comment about Hadley Cleanup Day, which the Climate Change Committee is sponsoring at the same time that the Mothers Club is doing their recycling at the elementary school. If you you need to sign up in advance to clean up an area of town, we're not talking about your own front yard. And you will get, given that you sign up in advance and go to Home Depot, you will get trash bags and gloves donated by Home Depot, tandem bagels, donating bagels for people who are doing the work. And it's, so far there are about forty people who have signed up to help clean up our town. This is a really great opportunity for you to do something simple and make our town look good.
Sounds good.
And Carolyn, was that it for your, we kind of
Yeah.
So we can, uh, leave anything off there. Any other announcements? Uh, we are not having the executive session tonight, correct?
We don't need to.
Okay.
And did you have, what what's the plans for next week? Do we all have to participate in that or not?
Are we going to have the hearing on the mosquitoes next week?
No, next week is not for any other thing but the
Yeah, it is, wait.
No.
Jennifer?
The public forum is on Wednesday night at seven P M. In the past, we have taken up, taken up other items than just the um, warrant. Um, so seeing how there was not time for something to be put on tonight, I don't see why we could not follow past practices and put on something that was on in the past. Um, I will say that there's more to the mosquito discussion than there is first presented, but I I will say the past practices has been that y'all have taken up other items, appointing people, taking votes. There are other things, other business have been conducted at public forums. Because it is a legally posted select board meeting.
I want, I want to know how the agenda is going to proceed next week.
Yeah, I I think the mosquito thing is going to be a whole separate issue, it's going to take quite a bit of time.
Yeah, I do too.
It's, it is, there's a deadline for a decision about opting out.
Okay, we, do we, can we have a discussion about it right now?
It hasn't been posted.
It's other, it comes under other.
Um, with this type of, Joyce, just to protect you guys, with this type of discussion, I think you're better off to have it posted and have people be able to see it. Yeah, to be able to watch it.
Yeah.
Oh, we could either have it after the forum or before the forum. I mean, we could start at six and do the mosquito thing in the forum at seven.
And just to be clear, it's not a public hearing.
Yeah.
It's the select board only. We're not going to have ten thousand residents making comments and whatever else. It's going to be our discussion. It's a select board decision.
If you would like to do it not at six, it's not going to take that long. I would be willing to do a six-thirty on the mosquito thing and then go for the um, the other one for seven.
I will, I will set the agenda up that way.
So wait, so you're starting later?
Six-thirty for the mosquito. And seven o'clock, wasn't that the time we were going to do for the open forum? Are we going to go earlier, Carolyn?
I thought it was, I thought it was six. Why am I thinking it was six now?
We can do six.
Were changed to six o'clock. Public forums historically in the past have always been at seven P M. To allow people to get to the forums um, after dinner. It will be um, after dinner. It will be a virtual, but, you know, if y'all want to change it, it's, it's a matter of changing the Zoom thing. I don't have to change a reservation or anything. Um, I was going with what historically had been done.
Is that good for everybody? Six-thirty for other business, and then seven for the public forum?
I'm concerned that we're not going to have time for public comment on that major conversation concerning mosquitoes, not a conversation that I've gotten today.
Jane, it's not a public forum on, on mosquitoes, so we don't have time to do that.
On mosquitoes, but there are people who should be heard. They are town residents and taxpayers, as you point out. I think we have to let some, maybe we put the time limit on them, but I think we need to let some people speak. I know the board of health has taken a position on this. They should be allowed to speak.
I think the half an hour is sufficient amount of time for any topic.
Agree.
Okay.
So, all right, six-thirty for other business and seven o'clock for the public forum.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Amy and Jennifer.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Nevinsmith?
Yes.
Changeloo?
Yes.
Waskevitz?
Yeah.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good night, all.
Good night, everyone.